Order the September 25th meeting of the Deschutes County Board of Commissioners. Will you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the first item on our agenda is the citizen input. If you want to speak on a topic, we have you fill out the blue form down there. I've got one here. If anybody else wants to speak, you can fill that out, or we can fill it out afterwards. But Rondo, AKA Ron Bazell. The AKA was he supplied.
A lot of us already know who I am. I'm an activist in Bend, Oregon. Have been living here as resident for almost 30 years. Some also know me as a political candidate sometimes. Today, I want to talk about something that somebody told me yesterday. I was surprised they said it to me. They said, "There are no homeless solutions." You can't solve homelessness. And I say, "No, that's not true. It's only true if you believe it. It's also true if you believe the opposite." Today, I'm not sure, under the direct supervision or not, I'm sure that you're aware that on Century Drive, just past 6-mile marker, near Widge Creek Golf Course, they're shutting down. I believe it's the US Forest Service, but I don't know. So, I'm here bringing a little bit of my ignorance with me. They're shutting that down. Thing is, by coincidence, a friend of mine asked me to stay out there last week, and I stayed the night. And I saw a friend help another friend, a couple friends, move out. And they proceeded to leave a few weeks' worth of trash. So, now I get to put that in the column of things I've actually seen happen, because I've read a lot of things. If I can recount quickly, a conversation I had with a sheriff when I was in jail last year during my campaign season for city council. He always chose me for his work parties, and he would ask me a lot of questions about issues that he necessarily was curious about. And we got talking about homelessness, and now I notice that our jail is full of homeless people, if you haven't noticed yet. And I mean, like, 98 percent. So, he told me his accounts of some of the cleanups that he's been involved with. And so, I asked him. I said, "Are you on a county advisory board? Because I think your experience is valuable." I'm not going to pretend to have the solutions. I do. But for the moment, we need people like this in a conversation. And I'd like to ask you to consider creating a citizens advisory board on homeless solutions. Because there are solutions, it's just that, here's my political theory. Everything you see in the man-made world is there because somebody has invested in it. We have homelessness in Deschutes County because there are interests invested in homelessness. So, I suggest that this year, we solve homelessness issues in our county. Otherwise, I'm going to keep talking about it louder and louder and louder. And I will be doing so as a Deschutes County councillor, excuse me, commission candidate. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, anyone else that wants to speak on any other topic that's not on the agenda for today? Okay. Move on to our consent agenda. I had some changes on the minutes, so that's the only thing I wanted to pull for April, or for September 18th.
Oh, you want to pull that?
Yeah.
That's fine. With that, here we have add-on updated agenda from yesterday. But with that, I'll move approval minus item number six, minutes from September 18th.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Further discussion? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. So, we'll proceed to our action agenda. First item is a consideration of board signature Resolution 2019 Day 044 rescinding the fire reinstructions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Ed Keith, county forester. Before you today, you do have Resolution 2019 044 proposing to rescind fire restrictions. You may recall, when you enacted these restrictions in July, we typically, based on average weather patterns, extend those out until mid-October. They were set to sunset on October 15th automatically. However, we have had a, I'd say extremely wet September in comparison to normal Septembers. It even looks like we might be getting some snow over the coming weekend. So, it's been, it's been an interesting and very quiet and safe fire season. Looking at stats for the state, acres burned are down quite a bit. Looks like year-to-date acreage for all ownerships is just under 68,000 acres burned. This year, or last year at this time, we were at over 883,000 acres. Current expenditure for somewhere in the neighborhood of 58 million. Last year, they were 530 million in suppression expenditure. So, fairly quiet year. It has a lot to do with the moisture that we've received with our rain, but we did have quite a lot of fire starts. And luckily, there were resources available to really effectively suppress those fires. So, just a little summary for you of looking back through the fire season. But those conditions have moderated quite a bit with our rainfall. Last week, the Oregon Department of Forestry removed their restrictions that correspond with, and ours look very similar to theirs, but ours apply to the unprotected lands in Deschutes County lands where Oregon Department of Forestry has applied to their fire protection district. So, with those considerations, I would propose that we rescind these restrictions early.
So, a couple comments. I saw the report last night on the news that had those statistics you quoted. So, that's a tenth, less than a tenth as much acreage, and about a tenth as much money. And that's just amazing. He says it's the lowest amount of fire since 2004, so 15 years. I think that rainfall locally is almost 50 percent more than normal, is what I track in the paper, at the Bend Airport anyway. So, and I think the desert's full of, I was out there the other day at the state lands, and all the stuff that grew up is there and dry. So, if we'd had a dry August or September, we might have a different surge. But it's just kept raining, hasn't it?
Yes, absolutely. And like I say, when we did have some of those fires start, we had, you know, a couple extensive lightning storms. They did come with rain, for one thing. And the other was that when we've typically had, you know, 20,000 people deployed on wildland fires, those were all resources that were available for, you know, quick and effective initial attack. And so, when we did have those fires, they were suppressed fairly quickly.
Questions?
Well, I can have, confirm, green fields all across the state. I drove to John Day in the north of Baker yesterday, and, you know, just those fields that haven't been irrigated late in the summer, they're all bright green right now, you know, just the farmer's field. So, interesting, interesting, different dynamic, for sure. I think there's fire restrictions, or a kind of burning, fire district burning discussion date also coming up?
That is. So, yeah. And this, I would definitely urge anybody that's aware that this is lifting, that this does not just allow open burning. This is just like, you know, the more restrictions as far as, this would not even allow like campfires, off-road driving, blasting, welding, those sorts of things. But burning is still restricted. It's being talked about being lifted as of October 1st. I believe we're starting to track that, assuming that this kind of next cold front comes through and gives us a little bit more moisture. But I would encourage people, if they're thinking of burning, to call their local fire district to make sure it's a burn day.
So, that's a different decision. Your backyard cleanup fire is not what we're talking about here.
Correct.
Great. Questions?
I don't want to, I just want to comment that we were really lucky this year with the numbers being significantly, you know, 10 percent of prior year and going back to 2004. But I do think it is a perfect example of when, why we should expand our fire-free day next spring. You know, we're looking for cost. Would that cost the county to add another day or two at not-for-free fire day? I just think that it's because of the rain, we're going to have more growth, more cleanup necessary. And, you know, it's a win-win for the county and for our residents. So, I would hope that even though we only spent, what is it, 58 million this year, that the county could pick up and we could expand fire-free day.
Sure. Yeah. One quiet year doesn't mean that our, you know, more intense fire seasons are behind us. It's nice to have those years, but it's definitely, you know, a lower point in what, you know, I'd expect to be a busier, busier years in the future.
Yeah. You know, to me, it's interesting that, well, what do you expect going forward? So, you go 10 times as much fire one year from another. It's actually more than that. It's like 12 times more. But other parts of the country had bad, like Alaska apparently had a really bad year. And I don't know what the rest of the country looks like, but...
Yeah. The rest of the country had, you know, relatively quiet year. Alaska was, was very busy and extended, they typically have a high percentage of the acres burned across the country. But this year, their fire season extended, you know, where it usually cuts off in mid-July, maybe it extended through August with, you know, just a several pages-long list of fires that were burning up there. So, yeah, you know, we definitely see, you know, variability from year to year.
Let's support. And one other note, I guess. Here comes the prescribed burn smoke, which we, you know, I do celebrate and advocate for. So, if there's two days of a controlled burn in the near future, that's going to be different than that uncontrolled wildfire that we were just referring to. So, yeah, 40 acres at a time, or whatever the numbers are, you know, let's celebrate the fact that some of that fuel reduction and wildland urban interface is being managed, and that I think there's announcements of today and tomorrow possibly around some areas.
Correct. Yeah. There's a couple on the Deschutes National Forest burning south and east of Lapine. And those will be, as fuels come into prescription and the appropriate wind carries smoke away from populated areas, will be ongoing through the fall.
And it seems like you're able to do more this year than in the past years. But that, is that true, or am I just imagining that from the news reports?
Yeah. The Oregon Department of Forestry had a news release yesterday about, you know, the new smoke management rules that do allow for some tolerance of smoke into populated areas. So, still complying with the national air standards, air quality standards. But instead of the zero tolerance policy of no smoke in populated areas, there's a, there's a little bit more tolerance for that with the realization that that's one tool to help reduce fuels in and around communities. And it's very difficult to have, you know, no-smoke policy.
But have we stepped up, or not we, but the Forest Service or Department of Forestry, is there more prescribed burns going on this year than there were last, or?
Well, we'll see. It's still early in the season. But there's, the weather forecast and permitting process through the Oregon Department of Forestry that allows for those is more tolerant. So, if the fuels are in prescription, there's going to be potentially more, you know, a few more days. I think ODF in their news release forecasted, you know, there might be 10 to 20 percent more acres burned across, you know, in a statewide basis. But that's, it's all always, in addition to the smoke, just weather dependence. So, if fuels are too wet or too dry, it's still, you know, we're still, we're still at the whims of Mother Nature a little bit, so.
That'll seek a motion.
I move, we have board signature of Resolution Number 2019-044 rescinding the fire restrictions for unprotected and Deschutes County-owned lands.
And I'll second it.
Further discussion? Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thanks, Ed.
Thank you, Ed.
Next, we'll have a consideration of board signature on document number 2019 Day 699.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Izzy Liu, Associate Planner, Deschutes County Planning Division. Earlier this morning, I passed out copies of the board decision. The initial draft was written by the prevailing attorney. Staff made some edits, and the version in front of you is the final version.
So, there was one in the packet, and is there slight differences between?
No, those are the same ones. I just provided an extra.
So, kind of getting right to it, in terms of the wording, I don't necessarily object to anything. I think it summarizes what I understood our decision on youth activity center. The only thing that concerns me is that the emphasis on regular basis being the magic words in this, quoted from Waveseer, that the activity is inherent place where activities center around youth on a regular basis. I see regularity as one of the criteria, but I also see the amount of use. And I don't know that I want change. I'm just bringing it up for discussion. But regularity would be one thing that we would lead to that classification as a youth activity center, from my mind, was a factor particularly in Waveseer, because it was, this one, the amount of use is also a factor to me, that it's not, you know, there's a couple that I've ruled where they just said, "We have some activities, you know, kids, friends of our, our kids come by and do 4H stuff." That wasn't, didn't really meet the standard for me. But with this pool, it's not just the regularity of use, but it's also the amount when they use it. It seemed like it was a lot of people sometimes. And so, I don't know if we want to include that as a factor. It just, as we, if we get challenged in any of these decisions, I want to make sure that Luber, whoever knows the, kind of the breadth of what we call a youth activity center. We've denied the licensing part, or, you know, private business part, or all these things as being the factor. But, so, I don't know what your thoughts are about, you know what I'm saying, Commissioner Dare?
I do know what you're saying. On a regular basis. I mean, there was extensive youth activities everywhere in the property, and it actually, you know, the pool area is in the center of the property in question. So, yeah, I can, I can agree with what you're saying, that it's...
Do you think we should note that as a, like, one of the factors, or one of the ways we get to, if we agree on that, should we note it as a part of the decision? I guess is my question.
Where's our legal counsel? Where's Adam this morning? Is he, he's not here?
He's not with us. But there's a section in the decision that lists out the variety of activities.
Right.
We could certainly include something in there that focuses on...
But more goes to me to the pool part of it, that, in other words, if this was a pool that somebody just had in their backyard, and they had their friends over there occasionally, this probably, it wouldn't raise to a youth activity center, in my mind. So, this is a public pool, and we saw evidence that there was a lot of use sometimes. So, I just don't want to pin us in for future, like, in an appeal with regard to, "Well, we didn't prove regularity, and that's your criteria." Well, it's, it was regular, and it was, it was also sizable, or, I don't know the magic word, but...
It was significant.
Significant, or, and I don't know if you want to, is today the deadline for this, or?
The 150th day is on October 11th, so we do have some time, if you would like me to make those corrections.
Think about that, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just, yeah. Dave, what do you think?
Well, you could, obviously, you can't take the language out in the quoted section of Waveseer, but in that next paragraph, you could probably remove "on a regular basis" and then "frequently." I think might broaden the board's reach, which is what I believe the board's indicating. They don't want to narrow it.
Well, I'm okay to leave "regular basis." I just thought we should maybe augment it, that it's frequent, yeah, like, frequency might be the word, or, it's actually the quantity to me, was that the pictures we showed, or they produced, showed a lot of people using it, so...
The volume.
I don't know what the magic word is.
You said many, but what's more significant than many?
We could certainly work with Izzy and bring back something next week. It'll be well within the timeline.
Yeah. You know, you see what my concern is in terms of appeal and...
Right.
Getting ended up in a box where they say, "Well, you didn't prove the criteria you've established."
It was a regular basis.
Yeah.
It could be one-offs with large volume, as opposed to just a regular.
The other question, I guess, to me, is, I kind of adopt a, just a, what's the, what do we say legally, clear meaning of the, you know, the simple meaning, youth activity center.
Right. Meaning, sure.
So, I don't know if that's a, I mean, that's where I end up defining this, so it meets those. It's, to me, the youth...
Youth activities occur.
Yeah.
Sure.
But it's many. It's not just...
Right.
A one-off, or two people show up every, you know, Saturday, or, I don't know. Do you, are you okay with them looking at that wording and?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
So, I'll provide...
Since we have the time.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I'll make those corrections, run it by Dave, and then can be back in front of the board next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Izzy.
Okay. Next is consideration of board signature document number 2019 Day 700.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Lewis, property manager for the county. What you have in front of you today is a request. It's actually a consideration of what is effectively a renewal of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lapine and Deschutes County. It was put into place end of October 2014. It expires at the end of October of this year. And in talking with Melissa Bethel, the city manager for the City of Lapine, she's had this conversation with her city council in a work session, and they have requested effectively a new IGA with the county. And with regard to this, there's no change in the terms from the existing IGA that's attached, to the IGA that's attached in your packet today. It affects 55 properties, all of the industrial properties located inside the Lapine city limits. Again, some of the terms are, the city would, through this IGA, be responsible for marketing, negotiating, all of the terms, everything to do with those industrial properties. And just a little history, the basis of this was that, if you think about some of the elements in play in Lapine, they conduct all of the land use reviews. They have a specific EDCO representative that works in Lapine, that works specifically to bring business, that handles a lot of the marketing and negotiations of this property on behalf of the city. So, their request, going way back to 2014, was that people are in Lapine, it's more efficient and more effective for them to do that. So, on the back end, we've had only one property sale under this IGA. We've had four separate option agreements, though, that have never come to fruition. We have had three different leases. One is a lease option as well, under this. So, again, only one property sale. The fiscal implications, the revenue of this is split 50/50 between the county and the city. The county is ultimately, as the property owner, is responsible for signing the deeds that convey ownership interest, or signing the leases, or the option agreements. We collect the money, and we distribute 50 percent of that revenue to the city. With regard to that revenue, pursuant to the terms when the county obtained these industrial lands way back in the 80s, is that that, those revenues are retained for further development or use to spur economic development or development of the industrial lands. So, currently, in the, in the county, right now, we have approximately $110,000 that's linked to these sales leases from going way back to current. And a recent, the most recent expenditure of dollars from that fund goes back to the traffic signal in Lapine. That was roughly $200,000 by, from the county to aid in the overall cost. And that was tied, that was as a result of the, the location of the signal is a prime entrance to the east side industrial lands in Lapine. So, with that, the proposal before you is to approve this IGA and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
No, I'm supportive, in support of the city council and the economic development efforts in the City of Lapine. I'd like, you know, continue being a partner. My goal is not to be a hindrance in the process, but, yeah, just the history and the evolution of the land, and the incorporation, and the relationships, I'm supportive.
And I just want to say that Melissa's done a great job in having this presented to us the end of September, so that we can actually sign something before it's due. And I really, I really appreciate her timeliness. She's been, you know, an effective new city manager, and I want to thank her.
James, you said it affects 55 properties. Is that how many are still in Deschutes County's name?
Correct. Those are in Deschutes County's name. There's a lot more industrial properties, but those are what the county owns.
And do you know how many are owned privately then, or?
You know, I think there, and we did this inventory two years ago. I believe there are 147, give or take, that's just Memory Bank's total industrial properties that the county at one time owned, that have been sold off over the years. So, we still have 55 properties.
So, 147 have been sold?
No, 147 total industrial properties. We still retain 55.
About 90 some. Do you know if any of those are selling, you know, turning over?
You know, there, it's been very slow. I know they are for sale. Been working with the new EDCO representative, Scott. It's just very slow sales going on in Industrial Park.
But, you know, it's going to be interesting. I was at the sled meeting, you know, Sun River Lapine Economic Development last week, and now we have a completely different team than we had two years ago, or even a year ago, with, when we had, who was the city manager, Cory? Cory Misley. And then Ryan Culp was the sled person now we have, was in Scott. So, different team. And I think Scott will be a good, worked hard to try to get more sales, so be interesting to see what comes of it.
That's who I was meeting with this morning, when I said, "I gotta go. I got a meeting in Bend at 10:00."
Oh, good, yeah. He seems real organized and thorough, and he's really working hard on it, so, okay. Well, I'm supportive of the continuation. I do think there'll be some success in the years ahead, so, okay. Well, let's seek a motion.
With that, I'll move board signature of document number 2019-700, an intergovernmental agreement between Deschutes County and the City of Lapine.
I'll second it.
Okay. Further comments? Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Next is consideration of chair signature document 2019 718, grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission.
Hello.
Hi.
Holly Harris, program manager with Health Services. I was here a couple of months ago with Judge Kutchly and Lisa Nichols to request that we, approval to apply for the Criminal Justice Commission Drug Court Grant. We were awarded $241,586 for the biennium, and I'm here today requesting chair signature for that award.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
It's a process to kind of understand, you know, the application, understanding what's going on at the Criminal Justice Commission, supporting the drug court with the state court system in that facility, staffing it. So, yeah, this is exciting, we being able to receive this grant.
I noticed that the only, the letter came in on the 10th of September, and we have to have it signed by the 27th. I'm like, "Well, timely."
Exactly. Don't give us much time.
No. I actually, I love the program, and I've been to the graduation. But I'm wondering, in the letter, it says it usually lasts from 12 to 18 months, but what is, what is the history in Deschutes County? Because the one I went to, they, some of them had been there quite a while...
Yes.
...before they graduated.
It varies.
And I mean, you know, and that's okay.
Yeah, it varies. I mean, you know, it's, it's a very robust program that people have to follow, so not everyone can get it done in the 12 to 18 months that is typical. But I would say, on average, it's probably about 18 months.
18 months is probably average, okay. I know some, one of the people had a harder time graduating, so, but they stuck with it.
They did. And if they can stick with it, the research really shows that it's very effective for long-term recidivism rates.
So, I think, what, are we limited to like 27 maximum in that program or something?
I'm sorry. I was hoping Lisa Nichols would be here with me. She knows the ins and outs of that program.
Right.
But they do have a limited capacity, just in terms of, I mean, the staffing for this program is pretty minimal.
Right.
And so, the treatment providers can only take so many, the coordinator can only manage so many. So, and it's so intense that they, there's just so much follow-up and coordination of care required, that you really can't get the group too big.
I know. Well, I, maybe in another two years, though, you know, we'll be able to expand that program a bit.
That would be wonderful.
You know, to keep, you know, keep families together. I think that's one of the critical things. the critical things, it's, um, you know, when you see our school scores again, you think, "Oh, my gosh, kids need to be with their family."
Exactly.
So, thank you for, for bringing this.
Thanks for your support.
Kind of following up on what Commissioner Adair was, um, mentioning, so twenty-seven total, um, but what is the thing that lengthens out? They have to go to a certain number of classes, or what is, or a certain performance?
They do, yes. They're different levels, they have, uh, you know, so, at the beginning, they have lots, and they, they actually can't even work during level one because there's so much required of them. They need to go to so many classes per day, um, with treatment providers, with, um, meeting with the coordinator, working on, you know, their sobriety. Um, and so then they move, as they kind of graduate through the different levels, um, it gets less and less, and then by the end, you're really only maybe seeing, maybe not even seeing a therapist anymore, they may actually be in remission at that point and not needing therapy, but are still accountable to the court, um, for certain requirements.
Someone commented that they wouldn't have to make that phone call, that daily phone call.
Yep, yep.
What will they do without that phone call?
[laughing].
Which, which way is the phone call?
They have to call and check in with the system.
Mm-hmm.
It's part of their requirement, so, you know, it was, it was amazing, because both of the parties did have, um, you know, small children.
Yes.
And that's, that's critical.
I encourage you, if you haven't been to a graduation, to attend one, they're really, really important.
Well, remember, we were set to do one, we were set to go to one, and then it was, that was the day the courthouse was shut.
Oh, right.
And I haven't been back, but.
I went to the one, then, cause it was the next week, so I got to go to that one.
And is it once a month?
Um, it, I don't know if it's every month, it depends on when somebody's graduating.
Somebody's graduating.
Yeah, so it, it varies.
I should check with.
Yes, but we can make sure you get included on it.
Yeah, I'd like to go to one, cause we had the discussion about it, uh, in front of us, and then we had it at Lipstick also, so I'd be interested.
It's more of a conflict with our Monday afternoon meeting, so, cause we get the invitations, we just gotta make sure we don't schedule ourselves over.
Yeah. Yes, that is a bit of a problem.
Yeah. Cause I've been trying to do that also.
But the room was full, every seat was taken, everyone was against the wall, I mean, the support for these people was, um, it was overwhelming, and you just feel so good that, you know, they, they have made a, a better choice for their, for themselves and their family.
And, uh, is the amount of money that we rewarded, the amount of money that we sought?
Unfortunately not. So, we, they changed the funding formula this year, and they didn't have a cap on what you could ask for, so we actually asked for what, um, would have provided all of the services that we wanted. Uh, we asked for five hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty-two, um, we were only awa-, we were very disappointed, um, in the reduction, um, there was reductions across the state, um, and, so, but thankfully, with our probation and parole partners, our sheriff's office, they were able to fill some of the gaps, um, so that we could at least have our treatment providers still continuing to provide the level of service that we expect, um, and, uh, and so, we, we came together as a group and found a way to continue the program, at, you know, and I don't have Lisa here with me, but there were some pieces that the Criminal Justice Commission wouldn't fund, and it was part of some parenting classes, I believe, and things like that, which was, didn't make any sense, since this is a family drug court program, but, um, we are finding ways to overcome that. Yeah, it was, it was a big reduction, and it happened, um, pretty systematically across the state for reductions, and I do know that they are wanting, the Criminal Justice Commission has historically just funded drug courts, and I think they're looking for ways for, um, other entities to help fund those, those projects going forward.
Host containment.
Host containment.
It's just, it's so interesting, cause last week, we were dealing with a, a program that was expanding, because they got more money than they thought.
Why did you?
Yeah, so it's, it's really interesting, as we deal with the state monies, um, because there seem to be choices made, that, you know, where they, one program goes up and the other one goes down, and.
True.
Yeah.
Well, it is interesting that, um, Rob Bovet from OLC, ALC is on it, and then Wally Hicks, so I was thinking, like, maybe I would call a couple of them, just to say, "We love our program, and we really would like to see more funding in the future."
Be wonderful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know.
Okay, any other questions? Let's see, commotion then, supported this?
I, um, I move we have chair signature for document number two zero one nine dash seven one eight, the grant agreement with the Oregon Criminal Justice Commission.
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Chair both yes.
Yeah, that's terrible.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Yep.
Thank you, Holly.
Let's see, I think we have a couple more things, and we're gonna do the letter, um, with, for OLCC, okay, you wanna join us? Yep, you're next.
Good morning Commissioners, excuse me, uh, Tanya Salzman, Assistant Director. Um, it is not, uh, your letter is not in your packet, because.
But you sent it to us yesterday.
Correct, that is correct, and I have paper copies that I.
That'd be interesting to know.
Absolutely.
I've, I printed one out, okay.
Thank you, thanks, Tanya.
So, did you end up changing some things then, from, uh, when we met the other day, or is this the same?
Um, besides the date, and, no.
Okay.
Uh, it is largely, it is intact, completely intact, from when I, um, when staff came to the board on Monday.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so, um, I'm here to request signature on this document, to send to OLCC.
So, um, I had a couple just word questions, or three, I guess. One is, um, in the middle of the second paragraph, there's a clause that says, "It remains our position," and, that our, that any applicant received local land use approval is considered an existing, et cetera, et cetera. Why don't we just, why don't we just say, "It is our position"? I mean, as opposed to, "It remains it," like, they knew to begin with, or why, how do they know it remains?
That's addressing, kind of, that there was previous correspondence with OLCC, and just saying, you know, we are reiterating.
But this is a letter from the Commissioners, so I was thinking, uh, you know, it's, there were, this is us weighing, before the you, the staffs weighed in, um, we could say, you know, we, we agree with the staff that it is our posi-, but it just seems, "Remains" is a little bit, it's weaker to me. Um, then, the sentence above that, I wonder about using the word, you say, "Thereby only addresses local land use permits," um, or the form, what about adding the word "future" local land use permits? Cause that's, it, we're making the point, it's just the land use permits, but it's also future oriented, it's not all local.
Right, I think the purpose of, and that's completely doable, I think our intent in writing that sentence was just the separation of local land use permits from state level, that was the distinction, rather than the temporal aspect of it, but we can certainly make that change.
Good point, yeah. I know, these are just ideas.
Yeah, of course.
And then the last one was that, that last sentence isn't, um, what's an awkward sentence, it seemed like it should said, should just say, "Should not preclude, preclude these applicants from moving forward," as nor, as opposed to, "Nor should," this should be ordinance number 2019.
I can recast that, certainly.
Should not preclude, since it's our letter, that just seemed like an odd, I don't, it's, it's not bad, but.
So it could read, um, ordinance number twenty nineteen zero one four, uh, "Should not preclude."
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
It just seems like it's a better sen-
Sure.
Do you have any questions, or?
I might even drop the last sentence, uh, because that's just telling somebody else to do something, or whatever, I mean, it's just, dropping the last sentence would be a, would be fine with me. I mean, because.
That is what we're doing, though, is we're, that's the goal of the letter, is, I see what you're saying, but we are.
But are we advocating for them to license the facilities, or just to, uh, respect the fact that we see a clear line, we go through a process, we give an approval, and it's up to them to take it from there? Um, and, and the last sentence says, "Your job is to take it from there," but it's just kind of outside of the intention of the, the letter, as I see it, but, just an idea.
Yeah, that's, okay. Commissioner Adair, what do you think?
Uh, well, I would leave, um, the last sentence in as, um, adjusted just now, so when you say, just to reiterate it, because we're definitely on different sides of this battle, and I just think we should be extremely clear. I like, um, this first change you gave, where you said, "Is our," in the second paragraph, "It is our," I think that's, you know, you're, I think that just makes a little more sense.
Absolutely.
So, I agree with those. And I wasn't quite sure about your second one, if that was a change or not.
I was adding the word "future" local, but it, it, it's, it is true, it.
I think it reads right, correctly, as it's written.
It is, okay.
Yeah, it's not.
It's the fact that it's local.
A local versus state.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Not temporal. Is there anything else that came up when we, um, when, we talked about this Monday, I guess?
I wondered how long this was going to take, because when we heard that decision originally, that Monday night at nine-thirty after the Tarabon meeting, I read the email from Nick, that, oh, my gosh, they're saying no, I believe, is not when it first, we were first made aware that they were gonna have a different decision with how we, as Commissioners, had made our original local decision, so, um, this is good. It's, I think this has been a month, right? Cause that meeting was on the twenty-sixth of August, so, a month later, we're actually technically responding to OLCC.
Well, staff is engaged with.
Oh, I know.
Back and forth, and so now we're weighing in, and.
Yeah.
Now, the other question, um, you know, I don't, I don't know how hard we're gonna work on this, or have to work on this, but, you know, we met with the Commissioners, and so it wouldn't bother me to write the Commissioners saying, at, at some point, you know, the OLCC Commissioners, when we, you know, they were on their listening tour, they wanted to listen to us, so, if we needed to do a letter to them, saying we had a concern about interpretation by the staff, you know.
Just seeing the Commissioners meeting.
Right.
So I, Hugh Pausik did reach out to me, and.
Did he?
Basically, he's, he took the position of, or, you know, he asked, he asked, "Was, was this our intention to shut it all down?" Or, and I, and I said, "Well, we need to have that conversation," cause my thought was, we had talked about, well, there's gonna be a subset that have land use approval that are in the system, remember, that was just the conversations we were having, but we didn't clarify specifically if we would intend on, if our OLCC gave us the opportunity, and, we didn't know we'd be in it, but he did call me, and I said, "Yeah, we're gonna have this conversation." So he was engaged, he wanted to know.
Wonder if he'd heard about it from?
He, they had, they'd had the discussion at one of their meetings, cause he called me in the evening last week after a OLCC meeting.
Remember he sent an email or something about it? Well, I think we oughta be thinking about what our next step is, if they don't just write back and say, "We agree," okay?
Well, I support CC and the board.
Yeah, could you CC the board on the letter, I think?
The Commission, yep, yep.
Um, I think that would's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I can make these revisions and bring it back for signature.
You don't need to make it a carbon copy, just a copy, the CC terminology, yeah.
There's no carbon in it.
I know, exactly.
Oh, yes, couldn't use carbon.
I like the extra C.
So in terms of getting it signed and out, why don't you just get it done, and we'll get it signed today, or, you know, we're around, we got another meeting in, um, at twelve-thirty till one forty-five, so, or whatever, so, if you can get it done, get it to Sharon, and we'll see if we can get it signed today.
Well, so I'll move approval as the.
Oh, yeah.
With the proposed letter.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, uh, any further comments? Commissioner, Commissioner DeBonne?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
And Chair both yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for getting it done. I wonder if, um, Dave, if we had, we didn't really think about this too much when we were doing the ordinance, I mean, we, we, I wonder if we would've worded the ordinance differently, if we'd anticipated that or not, I mean, I, or if that would've helped.
Again, as I said the other day, I, I struggle to find where OLCC and DOJ can be coming from, because what they're impliedly saying is that, in passing an ordinance in August of 2019, we somehow invalidated land use approvals that were over a year old, that's impossible.
That doesn't make sense. I was just wondering about their, their request.
They're not hanging on any law, that's for sure.
Interesting.
And I would agree with that statement, I mean, that is where we're at, this is almost a exercise that we couldn't see coming, cause it didn't seem to make sense, it still doesn't. I would agree.
Okay, um, other items, I, um, I guess one thing we wanted to follow up probably was to hear how it went yesterday, and your trip to Baker.
Uh, one note, the, uh.
Give it a little bit of time, brother.
The vehicle is covered in, uh, bugs, it's really messy. [laughing]. Um, yeah, so I attended Eastern Oregon Counties Association meeting in Baker County, uh, we met in the morning at the Baker County Courthouse, and then also midday at the event center at their fairgrounds, with the Forest Service Supervisors and Deputy Director, uh, Deputy Regional Director, or whatever her position is, sorry. Um, I took all kinds of notes, big, big topic here, one of the things that was really valuable, I was sitting next to, uh, Forest Supervisor Tom Montoya from Wallawa Whitman, and he put it in perspective, we were just, uh, having a lunch break, and I was sitting next to him, and he said, "Well, the Forest Practices Act from the seventies is where this started." So that, that really put it in perspective, cause remember, we're talking about the, on one hand, you know, it's the, the, the public lands, the federal forests in, in Oregon, the timber industry, the spotted owl, uh, so then there's a nineteen eighty-two rules-making package that defined what a forest plan is, and then there's like a two thousand twelve up to date, update to that. Um, most, there's like a hundred and seventy national forests across the country, all forest plans need to be updated, and most of them are more than fifteen years old. This is national significance, because this is, this is that cycle that's happening after the seventies, the eighties, and, uh, the next generation, and now all of them are aging, because the litigation process, the, you know, federal leadership, the, just every one of these forest plans, so this is the restarting of the whole forest plan project for a hundred and seventy forests across the country, uh, because, and there's been a few of them that have gotten across the goal line, so not all of them have been like this, but, this is an example of Forest Service working hard to get a forest plan in place, reaching out to other, other federal agencies, taking input from, um, advocacy groups, local government, and in the end, it was a product that took too long, that nobody liked, and it was a, you know, a flop, basically, couldn't get it over the, the goal line. And there's other forests around the country just standing by, waiting for this, you know, they really are, so that was interesting to think of that perspective. Uh, there's a proposal for the Blues Intergovernmental Council, the BIC, they're calling it already, and that's gonna be the, the group that basically says, "Okay, we're, we're the Intergovernmental Council, uh, providing input, feedback, and response, and, uh, available for, uh, comments, as the plan gets redeveloped, this next version of the plan." Uh, so October, it's gonna be over in Harney County, uh, Burne, so you'll be driving across for that, but then they're talking about.
Fabulous, I'm looking forward to it.
Yep, setting the first two meetings of the Blues Intergovernmental Council, which Eastern Oregon County will be at the table, so we're switching from planning to be officially part of the.
BIC.
Uh, the, the BIC, which is the, the Forest Plan.
Right, right.
Sounding Board, to really doing it, and then, so then November is the proposed dates on that, and they're talking about coming here to Central Oregon.
That'll be great.
It's, it's as big as the Governor's Office in the state of Washington in Oregon, uh, half a dozen counties in Washington and Idaho, not half a dozen each, but total half a dozen, Confederated Tribes, Warm Springs, Umatilla, Burns, Paiute, Nez Per, Pierce, Pierce, and with, along with BLM, Fish and Wildlife, USDA, Rural Development, Natural Resources Conservation Service, uh, and NOAA, National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, because some of those agencies are the ones that, please comment on our forest plan, and then it went in this big, took time, and then it came back, and then there was a disconnect with some plans, so then it just kept, these big circles kept happening, and they never got done with it. So this is the invitation to bring everybody to the table.
That's, you know, that's interesting, they've gotten such a wide circle of people, you know, it seemed, originally when they started, it seemed like they were trying to get the counties who represent local, you know, elected officials, working with the Forest Service directly is the primary people, now it's expanded to everybody, and it's going to be interesting to see whether they're able to.
Well, and each Northern counties association and commissioners are the co-conveners with the Forest Service.
Right.
So the forest plan is a product of the Forest Service proper, because I said, well, you know, because I was trying to think of it as three commissioners, when we pass something, we sign a document, the buck stops here, right? And so I was at the table yesterday, and I asked, okay, well, whose product is this? And the answer from the deputy supervisor, regional supervisor, she said, the Forest Service. So it's, the Forest Service proper is the one that publishes this document, and then there's all their layers of management and analysis involved.
So was Glenn there yesterday?
No, it was his deputy.
He hasn't been at anyone's, I think he was at one other besides Bend.
So, yeah, Lisa.
Right.
Interesting, because that, originally that was the goal too, was to be sitting with the regional head, working on it. But all I'm saying, Tony, is that they, when the county people started wanting to convene this, it was so they could get kind of a local involvement ahead of so many people being involved, and now it's ending up being everybody, the only ones that aren't in it are the federal representatives, and that was, um, a decision made the, we, the meeting before this, because there, there's so much disagreement between them that, that that would derail the process, but they, every other major player's kind of at the table now.
Well, and those are kind of mandated players, because, so we had that discussion too, uh, because Lisa Northrup is the deputy regional forester, she was the one that was there in Glenn Casamas's position. Uh, so, uh, there was the discussion about informed consent, uh, of a decision of the, the BIC opposed to a vote, thumbs up or thumbs down by the people at the BIC meeting, and then there was, the step was, well, some of this stuff is just federal law, and, and, you know, commissioners, we understand, okay, well, that's defining the box you're in, so we're not talking about stuff that's not law, we're talking about rules and how it's implemented, stuff that's not black and white law. So we kind of went around on that, so the invitation becomes as big as kind of the players that are there because of statute and law.
It's too bad my first cousin isn't still in Lisa's job.
That's right.
Wouldn't that be interesting?
Good.
Like, okay, Nancy.
Very influential.
Well, no, it's very interesting, because I think we have twenty different forests in Oregon and Washington, and, um, our forester just gave me the list of the lumber output for fifteen and sixteen, so now, because the president had signed that bill for three point eight billion board feet, I'm looking to see if they, in our area, actually increased our, um, timber production, and it, I've got some of the commissioners getting the numbers for me, but it doesn't really look like our area had picked up, that, from what I've looked, found so far.
Well, and one of the other ideas is forest management, remember, we've been aggressively suppressing fires for a hundred years, we're getting to the fuel, and this is, ideas around it, fuel reduction efforts, prescribed burns, but also torification plant going in, and John Day, they're trying, they're getting that going, uh, the Red Rock Biofuels down in, uh, Lake County.
Lakeview.
So those are not board feet, those are biomass, you know, so I'm just saying, there's other ways to measure.
Right, I know, but he actually said three point eight billion board feet, and it hadn't been above three billion since, um, last year, three point two billion, but since nineteen ninety-seven, so there should be a significant difference in the numbers, and, you know, it'll be fascinating to see when we see the actual numbers.
Yep, yep.
So you're getting a-
I'm getting the numbers of board feet, like, I've talked to the commissioners from Wallawa and things, how many board feet are there, they saying in their area that have been picked up, to see if anything was happening in Oregon and Washington.
Interesting, yeah.
Well, you know, it's just like following through, is, is, is that actually-
It's hard to make it happen, yeah.
Right, is it really happening?
Something to order, it's another thing to get, get it done.
Right.
So, interesting.
And do we want to burn it or graze it?
So do you think it was worthwhile to go over there and?
Yeah, yeah, in fact, I ended up taking a, a action item, which is the invitations to some of these folks that aren't, haven't been at the table for this, the BIC, the Blues Intergovernmental Council, and so I'm going to be working with Craig Trulock, which is the Malheur Superintendent, yep. Are you correcting my, the way I say it?
I think, no, I did, Mel Here is it?
No, because I've, I do, I was like, I try to say it correctly.
Mel Here? It's okay, you can say rodeo, and we're moderates like my husband.
But, so, reaching out to the Warm Springs Reservation, so that's in Jefferson County, but really, they have large land interests over there, I didn't understand that, so I took an action item yesterday's, which is to connect with the tribal leadership for an invitation.
That's great.
So, I mean, it's valuable, because that shows partnership and, uh, you know, making sure they know we're at the table, and I mentioned that was the goal for the three of us, to just make a presence whenever, on a rotating basis.
Oh, good.
Good.
All right.
So that's great, if they're going to come back to Bend then.
So they're talking, there's a draft letter, which is going to be the invitation, the next step, and they're talking about setting the date of, uh, November twenty-second in Portland, I was thinking they set two dates, maybe just that first one, so Friday, November twenty-second.
Please, October, what's that one?
Uh, well, I, this is the BIC, the first one for the Intergovernmental Council very specifically, so this letter is to go out to the partners that haven't been at the table yet, the big boys, the, you know, the rest of the group, so it was, the letter says Portland, but they discussed to go do it in central Oregon instead.
For November?
November twenty-second, and they discussed Thanksgiving, but they said, you know, this is kind of important, we're in a role, we're acknowledging that it is that week, but it was decided to proceed still.
Well, people are going to actually fly here, and, you know, so maybe that will help bring everyone in.
Yeah.
Here.
Oh.
And the October one is October twenty?
It's the last Tuesday.
Last one, okay.
I have it on my schedule.
Okay, good. All right, um, other items?
So Tom has something?
Something, Tom.
Okay, well, so, I mean, I'm, media called and asked, what's the next step for Terabon, and so I'm just, that's all I'm doing, is laying that out there, is there anything from the governing bodies' point of view, I guess, is, is, you know, because it was an application from ODOT, changed the TSP, there was a motion that didn't, didn't get a second, is there any other activity that you guys know of on this, or?
There were a lot of notes, uh, people thanking us for not doing something, and then there seemed to be some communications between a couple of the active citizens and ODOT about other ideas, and so I'm assuming there'll be some-
I received notes thanking for my position also, so it's just like that, you know?
Well, that's good, maybe we should find out.
Yeah.
Well, I think that was one of the problems, it was unclear where, where people were locally, so it'd be interesting to know, you know, how many, I think we, I got, um, I don't know, six or seven maybe, so.
I actually, um, had breakfast yesterday morning in Terabon at the Sunspot with, um, Robert Townsend, and I asked him if he wanted to drive around with me, and he didn't, but, um, I, then I went over to the hardware store, and everyone, talking to people there, what, what they were thinking, and the origin, the owner of the hardware store was on the advisory, he had actually made a suggestion, which to me makes a lot of sense, where they come down Smith Rock, right at eleven, you could have a small sign that says, if you want to go to ninety-seven, you take a right there, and you actually do a proper intersection for Lower Bridge, you know, like U Avenue where it's very clear, very clean, and people could go down there and go the direction they need to go. But he said, he felt like that was something that was simple for the city, and especially if we need to do something with their sewer system before they rip it all up, you know, again. So that was his original suggestion over a year ago. And, um, spent a day, um, in Salem with the road department, Chris was there, talking to us about, you know, roads and signs and, uh, you know, stop signs and everything, but according to some of the letters I've received, they would consider a stop sign, they don't really, put a light in, right at Smith Rock, but this other idea made a lot of sense, it's, what is it, it's probably a little over half a mile, maybe three quarters of a mile, from the turn at Smith Rock down to that, if that intersection was done, on a significant level, so that was, that was fascinating.
So, and the breakfast with Bob Townsend, had he requested that?
Yes, he wanted to meet with me, and so I actually, he was going to come to the office, and I thought, oh, no, no, let's meet in Terabon, because that's where we need to meet, and so I did want to drive around with him, and he said, oh, no, we don't need to do that, but I, so I drove around later, and then I was talking to people, and, um, you know, getting a feedback from people that actually live in Terabon, so.
So, so I think it answered your question of any other things going on, I think, my impression is there's some discussion between ODOT and some of the local people there about ideas, but it's just based on some emails I saw the week after we made the decision.
Yeah, and as I said, I'm just acknowledging that, you know, we had a, I mean, I, so then it puts us in a spot where is, you know, what is the, what's the logistics of this application, I don't know, you know, as in, there was a request to change the TSP, yeah, maybe you can help with that.
ODOT asked, uh, the Community Development Department about the status of the application, and we, we stated two things, one is the application has not been withdrawn, so it's still active, and the board hasn't definitively voted to, to deny it, so it's, it's still alive, it's just that no further actions are, have been scheduled before the board, and I'm not involved in any of the conversations that Chair Henderson just mentioned, but I, I'm aware that ODOT is having a number of conversations, I can confirm that they are having conver, cord, conversations with, uh, local residents, local businesses, and other entities, um, but Chris would be certainly the best person to, to discuss that with separately.
Other updates from you, Commissioner Derr?
Yesterday, we actually had the first official meeting regarding the Veterans Court, and though our, um, judges are, you know, so overwhelmed, they aren't going to be, they were not part of that conversation, but there are a lot of things that can be done in order to help with the Veterans Court. Amanda from the VA, the Federal VA Office, not with healthcare, um, was there, Representative Health, Shane, Sheriff Nelson was there, DA Hummel, and then Kathleen, the woman who's actually doing the research, pulling together what we can do, and it is, it's extremely positive. Somebody currently has, I think it's, unfortunately, it's like their third, um, case as a veteran, and if they would've had the help initially, probably they wouldn't have had the third case. You know, a lot of people don't really want to say they're a veteran, and they're really working on pulling the veterans out, and was it, what is it they can do in order to, um, help them, get them the help they need, and not make them part of the, um, you know, the jail system. So it was a really good meeting, we're going to meet again, and she's coming up with a draft proposal of what it is we can do without having the court part of it till we get our judge. Is there, but it, yeah, it is like, it's a lot of positive things, so it's, it's a start.
Good. Anything, any other meetings you want to report on?
Um, I think that was my day yesterday.
So I, um, one thing, I, I am going to the LCDC meeting tomorrow, um, the, I'm going to probably stay for the, all morning, because it's about housing generally, there's a lot of discussion by the, by the board about stuff, so I, I thought it'd be interesting to, while I'm there, to stay and listen to kind of what they talk about and how they talk about it, so I'll be able to report something back. Um, and I'll probably just give a short presentation, I think I'm going to focus on the issue of the housing goal being as important as others, and then, uh, follow-up on our letter that we sent, um, basically reiterating some of that, and, um, kind of advocate for keeping that in their work plan. But a lot of what they're doing tomorrow is about how they're going to move, you know, two thousand, Bill, House Bill two thousand one, House Bill two thousand three, talking about that, so it's, you know, all the things that, um, we heard that they were, have taken over the, the goals, so should know more by Monday. All right, Tom, additional things?
Uh, yeah, a couple quick things, commissioners, I asked Nick to stay on two, um, last week, Nick and I met with, um, Ben City Manager Eric King and Carolene Egan, their Economic Development Director, about the Bend Airport, uh, as we've had several discussions, and it came up during our joint meeting, if you recall, there's some, um, actions, uh, that need to be taken at the airport, and, uh, it's been a little bit piecemeal so far, the conversations that we've had, so we thought, the four of us, kind of, thought it would be a good idea to, you know, have a, a series of discussions with the commission on, um, just kind of the, the history and background of the Bend Airport, the, um, current trends, uh, going on right there, what's there now, could include a tour, so we've kind of, we've, we've laid out a series of meetings, we wanted to give you a heads up about that, um, beginning next Wednesday, on the second, uh, where we'll give, provide, you know, with the city's help, Carolyn will be there, some background on, you know, just kind of the, the current regulatory framework, the current business environment, and some of the land use issues associated with the airport, and at that meeting, we'll also lay out sort of a, a schedule. Wanted to just kind of give you a heads up on that, um, Nick, feel free to jump in on, on, um, uh, anything I missed, or, you know, the perspective from a, from CDD or the land use side of things.
That's, that's exactly right, Carolyn and I have been coordinating this morning to prepare for her presentation, really, she's going to lead it, and we'll be there for more of her Q and A next week on the second, and then, that's exactly right, then we'll schedule a follow-up meeting, they're, they're more than happy to take the commissioners on a tour of the airport, they've even discussed an air tour of, of the airport and area, potentially, um, they're going to extend those, um, opportunities for the board in October, and then we would have a final meeting, um, with the commissioners, this would just be us with staff, and in close coordination with legal, for the board to decide how you would like for, um, us to coordinate with the city on, uh, processing their application to update their, their, uh, master plan for the airport. Would you like it to be legislative, which means there's a lot more discussion and, and, um, interactions, and there's not the bias, and there's a lot, you know, the ex parte, those kinds of issues, there's always bias, but not the ex parte, um, conversations, or would you like it for it to be quasi-judicial, which is a lot tighter framework, um, and we believe that the Board of Commissioners has the authority to, to decide which, which avenue, which way to, to process it, so once you have the overview and then a tour, then we'll touch base with you on how you would like for us to, to work with the city going forward, so that you can, um, participate directly in that discussion.
Okay.
Are we hearing anything from the, uh, people that live out around the Bend Airport currently?
Um, we have a lot of interactions with them on, on various topics, of course, with CDD on a regular basis, with these three meetings, they wouldn't be involved in that, but of course, through the entire, um, airport master plan update, they will certainly be involved, and that would be, whether it's legislative or quasi-judicial, absolutely, we will include them in that process, from start to finish, yeah.
I know there's incredible potential for what can happen out there.
Exactly, yeah, that'll be very important.
There's some people that may not, you know,
Be thrilled.
Yeah, thrilled with it, because I, they're looking at expansion, things, which always affects the neighbors.
And that will be part of what they discuss next week, it's just part of the, their conceptual plans at this point.
I know they're doing some survey marking out there, because I heard from someone who works out there, and they were thrilled, so.
And James Lewis will also need to be involved, because the county's also a property owner, so.
Yeah, that would be one thing that'd be interesting, because I don't have any, I know we own property, the county owns property out there, but I don't know where it is, or I know where it is, but not kind of a map of it, so, okay. Speaking of that, um, one of the issues that Sharon had asked about was the, um, what was it, the state of the city?
Oh, the consulate.
It was conflicting, conflicting with, uh, our joint meeting with Lepine, is that what it was, state of the city with, uh, the Bend Chamber?
Mm-hmm.
So did, did you want, did anybody want to go to that as part of the, reset the, the Lepine meeting, or, must be a Tuesday meeting with Lepine. I wonder why we're not doing it on a Wednesday? Isn't that when they, isn't that when Lepine usually meets?
I think so. Must be a work session day, or is there a regular meeting?
I wonder why we have it on a Tuesday with them?
I'm not sure. I hadn't put the Bend Chamber event on my schedule, so, I mean, I kind of lean towards following through with Lepine at this point.
I wonder.
I'd like to, I'd like to see the city council, I mean, I, I kind of see them individually, but not as a group usually.
Well, I'm, I'm in favor of having the meeting, and I even, I wonder why it isn't on a Wednesday, I wonder if we could find that out, if they have a meeting on Wednesday, and we could, we do it as part of that, the next day.
Maybe it's a, yeah, find out if it's a special session, and maybe just add it to the agenda.
Yeah, do you want to, do you want to look into that for us? Okay. And then do we have a meeting set with Redmond yet?
Uh, we have a tentative date, uh, for Redmond, as well as Sisters, um, the Sisters is the twenty-second, I believe, of October, and Redmond is the first or second week in November. Um, so I'll be, uh, Lepine is coming up, and we've got a, uh, kind of a draft, uh, putting together a draft agenda, we wanted to check with you and see if there's any specific, um, items that you're interested in hearing about from the city, uh, kind of the, the standard thing is just sort of the latest development trends, new projects, new, um, you know, kind of permit statistics, and, you know, any other thing going on there, but if there's anything specific that you'd like to hear about, we can certainly give them a heads up, uh, put it on the agenda.
Well, we just, uh, signed the agreement for the land, so just kind of laying that out there, making sure we're all kind of acknowledge, just an agenda item acknowledging that, uh, and the loan we just did the other day, so, you know, they're just kind of those action items we can all just acknowledge and then check off, I'd like to see that. SLED update from Scott Orman, uh, you know, he'll, he's very energetic and, uh, getting up to speed real quick, so pretty exciting.
Yeah.
Um, yeah.
And, and if there's any further, um, what I heard, SLED was the, the new project, the, it's called the Reserve, I think, Russell's project, it'd be interesting to hear if there's any progress on that, because that's a city permit, yeah, so, there seems, and then there, as you mentioned, there was something else going on, some expansion, when I was down there the other day for SLED, I drove around to look at the industrial lots, and there's some project, I don't know if that's what you're talking about, that, something going in, some foundations and excavation work.
There's little sections of sidewalk going in, which is our land use requirement that you put a sidewalk in when you get your approval, so there's, that tells you something's really happening, because there's- So there's, that tells you something's really happening, cause there's little sections of sidewalk going in, unconnected, which is a shame, but. But yeah, I don't know the specific things in which buildings.
Other things, Tom?
Just one other thing, Crook County, I know Judge Crawford reached out, I know he spoke to both Tony and Patty, I'm not sure if you.
Yeah, he talked to me too, so.
So I'm still fact finding, actually a little bit about what's going on, I understand there's some issues with their behavioral health contractor and the state's involved. So they've reached out now in two different areas of, for help in providing behavioral health services. The one, if you recall, a week or so ago, had to do with crisis services and it was more of a request to be their backup. The one yesterday was much more immediate, involving their wraparound services and two specific clients. So part of the fact finding that, that we're still kind of developing is, and I see Holly Harris is back joining us, who may be able to add, add to the discussion. But is how it affects our capacity, our ability to deliver services to our own population here. So I, I'm not sure if there's anything specific that was asked by Judge Crawford or if we, you know, this is the right time to talk about that. Or if, if you have any general thoughts or direction as we continue to sort of get a handle on what the request is and may be in the coming days and weeks.
So, yeah, I mean, the Shute's County's operation and Crook County operation, different scales, so he definitely reached out, you know, to me and it sounds like to each of us. And I've kind of thought of it more of a, as a courtesy to make sure we understand, that's why I left you a message right away about the conversations happening. So, you know, picking up a case or two cases that, you know, if, that was a choice by whoever, I mean, I didn't authorize it on a phone call, this is kind of what I'm saying here, so that wasn't my intention. But communicating in their time of need is the important priority at this point. Yeah, we need to know more facts about what it looks like, cause if they have a, a whole provider system that's not gonna be there, or if they're just understaffed by one or two people, I'm not sure the scope and scale of what's going on right now.
My, my.
I don't know how much.
Yeah, my understanding is that they're kind of considering themselves in crisis at this point and it's not just.
May as well put on the mic if we're joining us, yep?
Not just one or two staff people.
Yeah, so I, and I, and I didn't get into that on the phone call.
And so.
Do you wanna give me what, are you coming back or do you wanna give me what you had? Did you have that stuff you brought for me?
The letter?
The other letter from the thousand friends.
Yeah, I'll grab it.
Oh, okay. Okay, 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 sorry, I didn't wanna, excuse me for interrupting, I was.
So, yeah, it's, it's more than just one or two staff shortages over there, so I, I don't know the extent of it, they haven't been in communication with us about that. But they have, they did ask us for a plan for crisis coverage, should they not be able to provide crisis coverage. And we can't absorb their crisis system with our current staffing levels without some sort of additional funding or staff or something from them. But we did offer them a, a pool of people that do on-call coverage for us for a crisis when we're short-staffed and we offered them access to that pool if they paid them. And then recently for these two child cases, they felt like weren't getting the level of service they needed in Crook County, so they asked us to take on those two cases. I think our concern going forward, what we can, we'll, we'll try and manage these two cases, we're gonna wait and see kind of what the ask is. But I think the concern is what's, what's the next ask and how extensive is it gonna be and what's our.
Don't have any more information.
Yeah.
So, so I think it was your email, Tom, saying about the two people, yeah, and the, I mean, I'm fine with that in terms of just an immediate need. Cause we, you know, we hold ourselves out as being able to do it, I, but I do, maybe we should have it as a work session next week as to what they're really wanting. Because originally, the request was a cou- a couple of weeks ago, was would we be a backstop or now it seems like it's gone into, but I don't really, that didn't seem like they were clear. Based on my communication with Judge Crawford, they weren't clear of what they needed larger picture, but he was, he was talking about it. So maybe we should have a more clarity on what is they really want. I, I didn't say, yeah, we're interested in becoming the crisis center, I, but it would be hard to turn down a couple of requests, specific requests, I guess, is my thought, so.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, we'll, we'll try and round out the picture, learn as much as we can and bring back some specific areas where we could use some policy direction from.
Do, do they have a health, behavioral health director or staff as well?
Uh, yes, yeah, so their setup is a unique, more unique than ours, they have, you know, Lutheran is a private entity that's there. And so their, their, their higher up people are not necessarily in Crook County. Their behavioral health, their CMHP director is out on extended medical leave, so they don't really have anyone that we can kind of communicate with right now.
Works for Crook County that's.
Well, Lutheran is their, their CMHP.
They don't have somebody that you can talk to that is on the payroll for.
For the county.
I'm saying as opposed, so that that person could be talking, cause it seems like Judge Crawford will be the one talking to you about it.
That's, that he's generally been the one that's been making the requests, I do know that they have, and I'm sorry, I'm spacing on his name, but the, the individual, they have consulting, that's, they have a consultant that's helping them try to navigate what they're gonna do about the situation. I think he used to be the director at Health Services years ago.
Right.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, I can't think of his name right now. Yes, Gary Smith, and so he's helping, and he actually reached out to us to let us know that some of these requests were gonna be coming our way. So he's sort of been our little liaison at this point.
Well, a good time for us to talk about it would be Monday, if we can, if they can get organized by then and as to what they're looking at, if they're, you know, they may be still trying to decide things, so they may not be able to say much.
He had said something to me on Saturday when I signed, Judge Crawford had, and so then yesterday afternoon, when he had called me, I was thinking he was at the, what, EDCO had their Crook County Day. But he said, oh, no, I've got this other issue that I'm, you know, in the middle of.
Yeah.
So it does sound like we need clarification.
We do, and I think the challenge, particularly for their, their specific requests for wraparound, even with these two cases, it puts us in a challenging position, cause wraparound has fidelity metrics around it. And they have, so they can only take so many kids and we're actually already at capacity for our fidelity for that program. So taking on even the two puts us outside of our fidelity measures, but we'll, we will help support them the best we can and.
So since you're, it sounds like you'll be there maybe on Monday, maybe we could have an update on the stabilization center also.
Okay.
Since, since you're gonna be there with.
Yeah, actually, Lee was planning that, working with Health Services for next week.
So Monday'd be a good time, so.
Yes, we'd love to hear the update.
Great, I'd be happy.
Good, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other things?
I had a request for executive session under labor negotiations, follow up to Monday's discussion and executive session.
Okay, and I've got feedback on that, so do we wanna do that next and, is there any other executive sessions? You will, okay, yeah, I, I got feedback, I did what I was supposed to do. Okay, so we can do that here, can't we, we just now need to turn off the cameras and, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
Or you could recess upstairs, is the Allen Room open?
Well, I mean, we're, can't we just, it doesn't seem like it'd take very long. So we'll adjourn for today or, or we'll recess and be convened an executive session.